All right. Welcome to the Tuesday, June 12th, 2012 Board of Education Business Meeting. And tonight you get a twofer. You also get our public hearing on limitation of administrative costs. The Board has actually been in session since 5:30 this evening. From 5:30 to 6:30, we were in closed session. We discussed the approval of the May 16th, 2012, and the May 22nd, 2012, closed-session minutes. We then also discussed and reviewed the closed-session minutes for the last six months of closed sessions in preparation for their release to the public. And we discussed employment of employees. At about 6:30, we then had our very first meet the Board in an informal setting. And that was for the few that were here right on time, with our little circle of chairs in the back. And we just had an open discussion with whoever wanted to come and discuss. And one thing we learned is we could have discussed for a lot longer. So for anybody we cut off, we apologize, but we had to stick to our schedule. Only due to be delayed by technology. So it's now 7:55, and we're going to begin our regular Board meeting. So let's start out with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first thing on our agenda is the limitation of administrative costs of the hearing. Does that mean any special procedure? I believe you have to call a roll call if there's something to attend to. So I'm calling to order the hearing on the limitation of administrative costs. First, Ellen, can you call the roll?
Ms. Ebner?
Yes.
Here.
Here.
Mrs. Durney?
Here.
Mr. McDonough?
Here.
Ms. Hirsch?
Here.
Mrs. Stupin?
Here.
Mr. Bloom?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
At this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Purnow to discuss why we're having this hearing and what it's all about.
Yes. This is in response to a legislative requirement that limits administrative costs in any one year to a 5% or less increase. This year, we exceeded that cost, and so we are required to hold a public hearing for that issue. Now, because we are in the bottom quartile of administrative costs, we are allowed to hold a public hearing, and the Board can vote to allow that to happen. If our administrative costs were not so low, the district would not have that option. They would have to have some other remedy. But because we are in the bottom quartile of administrative costs in state for unit districts, this option is open to us. So with that, I'm going to have Chris Welton do the overview and explain what happened, why we are over the 5% cap established by the legislature. Chris.
As Dave said, the current limitation of administrative costs worksheet for District 205's budgeted expenditures in excess of the 5% threshold. The excess was caused by retaining the former Assistant Superintendent for Finances and Operations through October of 2011 while employing her replacement beginning July 1st, 2011. Board of Education decided that this was prudent due to the tremendous administrative changes taking place in District 205 at that time. It was felt that the continuity provided by retaining her services was critical to day-to-day operations. Not only was the Assistant Superintendent for Finances and Operations new, the district had just hired a new superintendent and two other Assistant Superintendents who were new to their positions. As Dave pointed out, District 205 was ranked 378 out of 388 unit districts by the Illinois State Board of Education for Administrative Costs per Pupil. And so we were in the lowest quartile for administrative costs per pupil, and therefore may waive this limitation and still be considered in compliance.
So this evening, after Board discussion, we have resolution for the Board. The Board wants to vote on a resolution that would allow us to exceed the 5% cap. And again, we're allowed to do that by state legislation because we are in the lowest quartile of costs per pupil on administrative costs.
Yeah, why don't we allow the Board to speak first, and then there'll be the opportunity for public comments on this specific topic. Ms. Hirsch.
Thank you. I just want to -- this is an unusual case for the district, and I just wanted to explain a little bit. Having been on the Board at the time that we had a large shift, we had 40 Board members coming on post-election, we had a new superintendent, we had a lot of changeover at the time, and the decision was made to keep Kat Masterson on in her position to provide some stability and some institutional knowledge transfer as much as should be accomplished from July 1st to October. Honestly, I didn't anticipate that this was going to cause a problem for us in terms of hitting the cap. The other side of this, and I'm surprised, I guess I'm not surprised that we hit the cap, Miss Masterson was at the end of her career, was making a significant salary, and so keeping her on for those extra few months is how we hit that cap. But I also want to also respond that we have had in place a salary freeze for our administrators for the last two years. It's unfortunate that we find ourselves in a position to having to have a hearing talking about having a greater than 5% increase in our administrative costs when in fact our administrators have been living with salary freeze due to our budget constraints for the last several years. We've cut millions out of the budget each of the last three years, this upcoming year included. And so it's a little -- just trying to put it all in perspective. This is a one-time thing that we don't anticipate it's going to happen again. And I do want to recognize that we have asked our administrators to sacrifice, and they have stood by us and have acted in a very professional way, provided great leadership in our district as our principals, our assistant principals, a lot of our central office administrators. And so I just want to make sure this is represented in the full picture.
Mr. McDonough?
Just a few questions. What was the actual rate if it was over 5%?
10%.
And what was the rate without excluding Assistant Superintendent Masterson for Miss Masterson's holdover, the cost of that?
I did not calculate that, but it would be, it might even be a reduction without that overlap.
It would have been a reduction.
Yeah, it would be negative.
Great. And next year, we don't anticipate having a hearing such as this, or nothing you can see at this point if we close that?
Due to this overlap, next year will be a reduction. It will be negative in next year's budget.
And is part of this administrative cost, do we please enter into that?
No.
It is just the Assistant Superintendent for Finances and Operations salary line item. The issue here is that for a quarter of the year, we employed two people on that line item of the budget.
And our ranking was 378, you said?
Right.
378 of 388, even with this increase?
Yes, yes. So out of the, I mean, to rephrase that, out of the 388 unit school districts in Illinois, Elmhurst is in the lowest 10 when measured by administrative cost per pupil.
That's very good. Thank you.
Any other Board discussion? Ms. Stupin?
Actually, that's really what I wanted to point out, is it's really interesting that we can hit the 5% or 10% over the cap when we are 10 away from the bottom of the lowest-ranking administrative cost. So, you know, that's really something that, you know, I really want to look into a little bit more about, you know, the whole tax gap. And I mean, it doesn't happen often, and it's an unusual situation for us, but for us to go that far over when we're so far under.
The purpose of the law is that the state in Illinois wants constituents to know if you're going to be giving your administrators big raises. We didn't give anybody a big raise, in fact. We didn't give anybody a raise. What we did do is for three runs, employed two people on the same line item of the budget. And that's the sole reason we're having this hearing tonight. Any other discussion? Okay. Now, I'll open it up to public comment, if there is any. Hearing none. Then do I need a motion to adjourn, Mr. Purnow?
Yes.
All right. I'd like a motion to adjourn this public hearing in order to return to our regular meeting.
So moved?
Moved by Ms. Hirsch, second, and by Mr. McDonough.
Second.
Thank you. All right. Voice vote? All in favor of adjourning this public hearing to return to open session to our regular meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. We're back in our regular meeting. And with that, we get to go to the best part of our regular meeting, and that is student recognition. We'd like to recognize New York High Boys Track Team, state champion pole vault.
Stand right in the middle, where everyone can see you. My name is Stan Relling. I'm the coach of the Boys Track Team at York High School, and I'm very proud to represent the team with the recognition of Nick. We had eight individuals that competed in the state meet this year, and Nick was the best of the best. These athletes always have great stories. I think it was maybe 18 months ago when Nick's back was bad enough that we were wondering if his pole vault career would continue. In fact, I think he got some medical advice that said, maybe you should just stop doing this activity. Anyway, he persevered and went on. Last year, he was an All-State representative. He finished ninth. And there's probably 30-some pole vaulters that make it to the state meet. He was ninth, and ninth was the last individual to become All-State. And this year, with, we think, with maybe four individuals ahead of him, from last year, he jumped ahead of them and became the state champion with a great vault of 16 feet 3 inches. High school, it used to be 14 feet, was pretty good. In fact, last year, I think your best vault was 14 or 14.3. He improved two feet in one year, which is a remarkable achievement. I'd like to recognize his event coaches could not be here today. One was a recent addition to our staff from Morton High School, Joji Ineshi. He's been with us two years. And the other coach has been a volunteer with our district for 27 years, a volunteer, and he's been with our pole vaulters all that time. And we're still looking up. We think Nick is the first pole vault champion in York history, all right? An outstanding young man. Next year, he's going to represent our school in the Big Ten. He will vault for the University of Minnesota. And we think we're going to have, we think at this point next year, there will be five York graduates that will represent our school in the Big Ten, and Nick will represent us at the University of Minnesota. You know Nick. You know what a great young man he is, and if you don't know him, I feel sorry for you. I'm really proud to sit here and say this, because after last year, I thought he'd move up always, but to become a state champion, a lot of things have to go right, and you have to be a very committed athlete, and he was. So, thank you very much.
(Applause) I'm going to stay here. I'm going to say a few words to him there.
The torture's not over.
Yeah, sorry, the torture is not over, because I, Catherine, know Nick and his family for almost Nick's whole life. And if you don't know, he is referred to as the Flying Squirrel. And if you Google Nick Scarborough, you will find a picture and an article about the Flying Squirrel from this year, and talking about his 15-foot vault hurdle that he achieved. And then he goes on to state championship at 16.3, which he was pretty darn excited about. But really, I wanted to congratulate all of you. I mean, Stan, you know, everyone talks great about you. And Coach Joe, yeah, you know, he's a great addition. The track and field, you know, is remarkable. You all do such a great job. So, you know, congratulations to Nick, congratulations to all of you, because it really was a team effort. I know that Nick did a lot and learned a lot about himself through this sport, that he can also apply to the rest of his life academically and in his endeavors, whatever he chooses. And it's kind of interesting, a little bit of tidbit for Nick. I know that we all, you know, in middle school, actually grade school and middle school, thought Nick should be the runner. He was a runner, but he didn't feel the passion. So freshman year, he decided he would try pole vaulting. And courageous, really. It was something different, it was unusual, especially for us here at York anyway. But he was able to be passionate about it, find something that he's passionate about in an extracurricular activity that he had no clue what he should do. And he learned an awful lot about himself. After he won the state championship, I asked him, what was going through your mind? He talked about all four years. He talked about his coaches. He talked about his parents letting him not necessarily run, but, you know, do what you feel passionate about. And he talked about how he prepared for that day for state championship, and what he learned from the previous year being at state championship. And he talked about his teammate who will be there next year, Sean. And, you know, that Sean, you know, now he's got the experience of being in that position of competing at the state level, which is so different than any other competition. And he talked about what he learned last year, what he could do from a focus standpoint, stepping aside out of the sun, to, you know, kind of ignoring people and getting in his zone, and understanding what he needed to do. And if you look at the Flying Squirrel picture, it gave me a really good, not just visual, but thinking about all the elements that go into pole vaulting. You know, so it's the stride, it's, you know, where you plant, it's, you know, how you go over the bar, you know, all of these different things. And those were all of the pieces that he was preparing for before he did, you know, each one of the vaults before the final. But, so, you know, this is a young man who really wasn't a competitive sports person, but really learned a lot about himself. So I believe that Nick is going to have a great story for students and people, you know, through his life as he looks back at this experience. And it's not just about the sport, but it is going to really transcend Nick's life from, you know, talking to him. So, just a little bit of a story so that you understand what Stan said is, you know, if you don't know him, I'm sorry, but now hopefully you can know him a little bit better. And it's really what we are about here, you know, in Elmhurst and in education. It's not just about that one thing that you do, a sport, but it's how it applies to the rest of your life. So Nick, with that, we're proud of you, you know, we're proud of the coaches, we're proud of, you know, the athletic department and everyone that goes into it. So congratulations. I'll stop talking, but I have to read along proclamation. So whereas, class of 2012 senior Nick Scarborough won first place at the Illinois High School Association's state track meet held May 26th, 2012, at Eastern Illinois University by clearing 16 feet 3 inches to earn the Class 3A Boys Pole Vault title. And whereas, Nick is the first state champion pole vaulter to represent York Community High School, is the eighth All-State pole vaulter in York history, and is only the third to earn the honor twice. And whereas, the continuing success of the Boys Track Team has been achieved through the contributions and support of many individuals and groups within District 205 community. And whereas, the effort, dedication, and teamwork developed through the sport of track and field has a lifelong influence on the members of the 2012 team. And whereas, the accomplishments of this team brings pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, and to the community of Elmhurst. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education and administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to Nick Scarborough, his parents, head coach Dan Reddell, and assistant coach Joe for their outstanding achievements. Congratulations, Nick. (Applause) Congratulations. Thank you. Stan, this is for you. (Inaudible).
All right. And I'm with business. The next item of the agenda is public comments. We have three.
Congratulations.
The first, from Elizabeth Dirksheid, followed by Holly Cost, and the third from Monica Pickner. Now, do I have that order correct? Is that the order? Okay. If you could come up to the microphone, state your name and address. And just to point out, it is our policy not to comment on what's said at public comment, but it is our policy to listen closely.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Dirksheid. I reside at 321 North Edison Avenue. Together with Holly Cost, I co-chair New York Academic Boosters, a committee of New York Parent Teacher Student Association. Our committee is made up of about 25 members, including two Board members, Marie Hirsch and Karen Stupin. We'd like to thank them this evening for giving even more of their time to District 205 than they already do via their membership. We'd also like to take a moment to share with you some highlights from the past year, results from collaboration between our members, other fellow parents, your administrators, especially Diana Smith, Rod Wagner, Chris Covino, Amy Thompson, and New York faculty and students. First, our mission statement, which guides our efforts. York Academic Boosters are committed to raising school and community awareness of academic achievement at York High School. We do this by partnering with York and the community to recognize both high achievers and those who strive to improve, working to increase participation in and recognition of academically-related clubs and activities at school and in the community, and advocating for strong and diverse course offerings that challenge every student. In recognizing achievement, we worked with York staff this year to encourage the introduction of a two-tier honor roll. Students are now recognized for achieving a 3.0 to 3.49 GPA, as well as for achieving a 3.5 GPA and above. Students and parents alike receive personal emails from Principal Smith congratulating them. Honor rolls were posted on York's website, and Power School reports now reflect honor roll and high honor roll status. Academic Boosters, by means of donations from parents and McDonald's, offer a morning doughnut and apple slices to all honor roll students. We also worked with Mr. Wagner to spread the word about academic clubs and activities. Beginning with 8th grade transitions night, academic clubs were highlighted at York's amazing race. Academic club successes, as well as academic achievements in every subject area, were also highlighted via our Academic Boosters website, which is housed on New York's home site. At the same time, York has done its own work, elevating communication about high levels of academic achievement and successes of academic participants. Daily announcements feature weekend and weeknight successes of Scholastic Bowl, La-Team, and others, as well as athletic events. Academic Boosters also applaud the administration for including academic club opportunities within each subject area in the Course Guide at York this year. It's another great way to highlight for students how they can get more involved in their favorite subjects outside of classroom work. Our signature project this year was the introduction of the Making the Most of York Parent-Parent Guide, which Elizabeth will now hand out to each of you. The purpose of this guide, and it's something we did spend a lot of time putting together, was to share parent knowledge that we've uncovered over the years about York's academic opportunities, and to ease the transition for first-time parents and their students, also to get parents and students talking about the different opportunities available at York. The chapters in the book include how to plan your four years at York, information about your counselor, tips on how to fit everything into your day and your year, also how to get help with your homework, and different locations at York that you might want to get homework help. Testing, information about district-wide tests, as well as high-stakes college testing, college planning, extracurricular academic options, the different honor societies and awards at York, and a very extensive glossary of terms. This is a lot of information that wasn't necessarily available in one place. We kind of put it together in one book and thought it was great to hand out. We distributed over 200 copies of this little green guide, primarily to incoming parents at the 8th grade academic night, which is in January at York, although current York parents have also found it very helpful. The guide is posted on our online website, and will be updated next year with new content based on parent feedback we've received over the year. The York administration helped us with this book, approved it, suggested comments, and appreciated the parent guidance that was being offered. So we didn't do it on our own, we worked with the administration. Academic Boosters also supported student honor panel presentations at the 8th grade academic night, an optional session for all incoming 8th grade students that was new this year. We volunteered at the York Duke Decision Day, which is on May 1st, when all seniors can post their college decisions on Big Mac and locations of where they're going in their futures. And also put together a thermometer of scholarships that shows visually how much academic scholarship and merit scholarship money was awarded to York students, which was over $1 million this year, to try to promote that and let people know about it. This event celebrated seniors, but also helped the younger students visualize the path to success the post-secondary planet can have. We also engaged in substantive discussions with the York administration and faculty regarding in which math curriculum resulting in a parent and student survey to gather feedback on potential program changes, which is a great thing, and we're really happy to see that. For STEM, this coming year, we're working together with York Math, Science, and Industrial Tech Departments, and the College and Career Center, and dozens of students to plan over the summer an interactive science, technology, engineering, and math day for high school students Saturday, November 10th. This event is including York teachers, community members who work in STEM related fields, and a community resource fair which will be held in the comments. We want to thank Shannon Ebner for helping us with this, and we plan to build on these activities next year, continuing with our honor roll days, 8th grade transitions, updating our book, and partnering with York. Thank you.
Hi. I am Monica Pickner, and I live at 325 Scottsdale. We want to thank Shannon Ebner for helping us with this, and we plan to build on these activities next year, continuing with our honor roll days, 8th grade transitions, updating our book, and partnering with York. Thank you.
Hi. I am Monica Fickner, and I live at 325 Scotts. I wanted to thank Holly and Elizabeth. This booklet is really great. And just to say that Donut Day definitely got my kids to school early this year. I also, I want to thank the board so much for tonight, for your meeting with Alabas, and I just want to thank you guys for how much work you put in. I realize that there is just a lot of pieces that go towards all of your volunteerism and then it's jurism, and I do appreciate it. And I decided to make an official comment, like I mentioned when we were at our little discussion. I think you guys, you're doing a ton of work, and a lot of it is about budget cuts and stuff. I really think you need to think about doing monthly or quarterly, all the stuff, the great things happening in District 205. Just a little sheet, a little briefing page, a little USA Today, do some photos or something to remind all of us, all the great things that are happening, the staff, the programs, you know, what's going on. That is kind of my suggestion to maybe help through some more difficult times and difficult decisions that you all are making, and might help remind people of all those great things that are going on. So, thank you so much.
I thank everyone for their comments this evening. And the next item on our agenda is superintendent's communication. Mr. Colonel. Two items this evening that I'd like to bring up. The first one is FOIA requests that we received. Again, we review these at board meetings. We had three FOIA requests that we received regarding bids for the Lincoln School weather proofing, and all of those FOIA requests were granted. The second item under my report this evening. I have put in front of the Board of Education the policy, board policy, and let me make sure I have the number right. It is...
2220.
2220, thank you. Policy 2220, and specifically, we'd like to point to the board, the section on minutes, and board minutes that are taken at both closed sessions and open sessions. Board Improvement Committee has had some concerns and had discussions about board minutes and how they are presently being taken. And if you look at the minute description itself in your board policy, it states that there would be a summary of discussion on all matters proposed, deliberated, decided, and a record of any votes taken. Some of the concern is some of our minutes are running as long as 30 pages, and that certainly does not reflect the summary of Board of Education. And so the School Improvement Committee had some concerns about that. And so I'm going to turn over to Karen Stupin, who will give a summary of that Board Improvement discussion on minutes and a proposal on where we should go.
Thank you, Mr. Colonel. And thank you, Ellen Walsh, for taking copious meeting minutes for us too all these years. You know, what we wanted to do is the Board Improvement, actually, it came up in many different discussions the past year. And so the Board Improvement and Policy Committee have discussed, you know, what do we need to do? And we actually went back to the policy, and this policy 220 really articulates the procedures for meeting minutes. And, you know, I just think that over the years, you know, we just kind of got off track and started, you know, putting more information in. But the point being is, we do video record and audio record the meetings, and therefore you can get a verbatim, and that is an accurate depiction of the conversations. So what the Board Improvement Committee would like to do is to propose to the full board and reach consensus or gain consensus around can we adhere to our policy? And if you look at this policy, specifically in the meetings, it articulates that we do want to have, you know, all of the discussions that we have, that are voted on, how they're voted on, and a description of the topic. But if we're trying to put more of the conversation in, we either have to have all the conversation or just a summary of what was discussed and what the outcome is. And that's what's identified in our policy. So what we would like to do is gain consensus from the full board. Can we adhere to our policy with regard to meeting minutes for these board meetings? And we do want to highlight the discussions that we have, a brief summary of what that discussion is and any votes. And for anyone who wants a verbatim, that they listen to the audio or watch the video, because then they will get the true discussion. And I know that one thing that we as board members said is, you know, we're always saying, wait, you know, is that really the discussion? Did it capture my comments? And it is very time-consuming, not only for our personnel to try to capture what we're saying, but also for us to review to make sure that it really does represent our conversation. And we kind of, quite frankly, have all said at different times, it really doesn't, you know what I mean? You really need to get either the video or the audio to capture the true essence of the discussion. So is the board in consensus that we can adhere to our board policy and kind of hear down our meeting minutes? And if someone wants a verbatim, that they listen to the audio or the video, any discussion?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with the... It's cumbersome to review minutes, but if you have several meeting minutes that you need to review, and they're 20, 30 pages each, it's hard to get through that and make sure all of the, the essence of the discussion is captured in that many pages. So yes, I'm in agreement to have meeting minutes be, you know, a few pages, whatever is reasonable for the meeting. You know, but just a handful of pages would be best.
Ms. Hirsch?
I have no problem supporting asking Mrs. Walsh to try to capture the essence of the conversation, I think is what we're looking for as opposed to a verbatim, you know, if this person said this sentence. I think the point is, you have to remember, we're a body of seven, and we take individual votes, right, as a board? And so our votes will be recorded individually. However, the discussion and the consensus and the deliberation that we do is part of the deliberative process, but really, individual comments, I'm not as concerned about who they're attributed to. The purpose of the comments and the deliberations is so that we can each come to a decision, and then our decision is recorded accurately in minutes, which is always the case with Mrs. Walsh. I think it might make it easier on Mrs. Walsh. I don't know if it'd make it easier or harder to try to go topic by topic and provide, you know, a snapshot, a summary of the discussion. But I have no problem attempting to make the shift to a shorter and different approach to taking minutes.
Ms. Roni?
Are you suggesting that we not include the motions in the minutes?
Oh, no. Those would be included. I'm sorry. I just meant the discussion around, I think, you know, Maria Hirsch said that we should be, you know, having all of our children arrive at seven in the morning. Individual comments don't need to be attributed. I think the point is, what was the meaning of the conversation that was had? What were the concerns that were expressed? They don't need to be attributed to individual board members, but obviously motions, seconds, you know, votes are taken, and those could be recorded.
Because that's not really clear, who in policy is written, whether or not the motions should all be recorded. And I just wanted to make sure that our secretary is going to be able to get it the way we want it.
Can I clarify what you're saying, Susan? Because item number seven says a record of all motions, including individuals making and seconding the motions. And we want to make sure that all, you know, that everything is recorded. It's just that no one humanly possible can get every single word we say.
So whoever wrote this policy should have put that up underneath point number three before the roll call is taken. Never mind, it's probably me.
Mr. McDonough?
There's a whole continuum on how detailed you go with the word summary. And I think what we're saying is recognize individual comments, even if they're characterized as conclusions, it's not constructive because it requires a certain amount of board time to check it and to make sure that it's capturing the flavor. And I think in some ways, it allows, it may cause more, less clarity than more clarity. I think it's just better if it summarizes what the discussion was about.
Yes.
The ideas that came forward stated in general terms, and then I think the tapes should speak for themselves and give people flavor who say what.
Any other discussion? Now, require a motion, just a consensus? No, we were just looking for consensus. So we will, you know, we will start, we can have the minutes and start reflecting what we do with consensus. All right. Great. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of board meeting minutes. Of May 16, 2012, and May 22, 2012. Anyone not like how they were quoted? Any proposed changes? I will accept a motion to approve the minutes for those two days. Anyone?
I move to approve the May 16, 2012 minutes and May 22, 2012 meeting minutes. As presented.
I'll second that. Thank you. Move by Mrs. Ebner, seconded by Mr. McDonough. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes from May 16 and May 22? Say aye.
Aye.
Propose a motion here. Next is board committee reports. We start out with the Board Improvement and Policy Committee.
All right. So first, I'm going to begin, let's see, May 23 is when we last met, and it seems like years ago. But we, I'm going to first start talking about the Board Improvement and Community Relations discussion topics. First up was the legislative engagement by the board. What we're trying to accomplish here is that there's advocacy from our board and a collective effort as to getting involved with legislation and communicating to our legislators the positions that we're in within education. So it's kind of a two-way thing. What we did at this meeting was John Moss, who happens to be the federal relations representative on Lend, and actually has been with Lend since its inception in the early 80s, who's also a legislative liaison in Glenbarre District 87. What he did was share two perspectives. One, his role as a federal relations legislative representative on Lend, so he represents all the federal-level education legislation. And he keeps everyone within DuPage County aware of what that is. And it's two-way. It's information coming from DC out to us in DuPage County, and it's also when we have to have a call to action and we need to advocate. The second thing, which was really important for us, as we look at how do we collectively in District 205 and the board members work with legislation, is since he has been with Glenbarre District 87 for 32 years, they have had a board, district, community organization around for a number of years. And we wanted to obtain some quote-unquote "best practices" of how they do that. And so that's why we asked him to come in and begin to educate us as to what we can do. Outcomes from that was one in particular, is we are going to have a list after ready, if you will, for every time that we get a call to action, which seems to be more and more so, that we have a list of who our legislators are, you know, contact information. And so when there's a call to action for us to contact our legislators, to educate them or advocate on behalf of education, that we have that. The second thing is that what we'd like, what we're going to move forward and discuss at our next committee meeting is having a meet the legislators, if you will, where we will ask our legislators to come in, potentially one-on-one, you know, one legislator to come in and meet with us like a committee of the whole, so that they can share with us, you know, what is upcoming legislation that's affecting education, and we can have that conversation of the impact to us. And we begin to build more of a personal relationships with our local legislators and the legislators that are representing us, because that has more impact, is what we're learning from other districts. So that, in a nutshell, is legislative engagement by the board and what we're doing. I'm trying to share a little bit more information based on the feedback that we got in Meet the Board earlier this evening, so that everyone gets a flavor of, you know, really what we're trying to accomplish, what we discussed at the meeting, and then the outcomes. The next topic was planning a board improvement retreat and our board self-evaluation. You know, we all, what we do for everyone is, we do a self-evaluation annually, is what this board has been doing, and we are holding ourselves accountable to, are we executing what we had planned to, and how well are we doing that? So with that, we, one, created a survey based on our three strategy meetings last June, and we all responded to that survey, and we got the results. And on June 26, from 6:00 to 10:00, we will have a meeting with IASV, our Illinois Association of School Board Representative, who will facilitate that discussion. And the outcomes will be, what are we doing well, and we need to communicate to, you know, Mrs. Fickner's comment earlier, to communicate to everyone, whether it be employees and parents and community, what we're doing well, and the areas for improvement we will prioritize and try to chip away at getting better at what we do. So that is planning for the board improvement, board self-evaluation. Engagement in the board and community. We had our first meet and greet this evening, right before this public board meeting, and we got some good feedback, and we asked for additional feedback, whether that be in writing or email to District 205, email address. And it sounds as though we will continue that process, and we will continue to fine-tune it based on feedback that we get from community members. School Board Governance, governance recognition. This is something that came from the IASV, and what they're doing is they send it out to all the school districts, and that you can recognize how well you're doing. We, as a committee, decided not to apply to be for the School Board Governance Recognition. What we, all the things that they will evaluate us on, on the application, are the things that we had decided last June that we wanted to work on, and we were continuing to do that. We felt as though we needed to go through our self-evaluation first and get a year under our belt and reevaluate next year. Board meeting procedures, we talked about one of them. Once again, thank you, Mrs. Walsh, for doing a fine job with our minutes, and thank you for being flexible with any changes that, you know, that we discuss and we work with the administration on. The second piece was brought to our attention about the voting method, just FYI, and it's in the same policy, 2220. And we wanted to make sure that we adhere to our voting method, and what it is, is in particular, the sequence of casting votes. And the way that our policy reads and how we would, we want to adhere to the policy is that the sequence of casting votes shall begin with the board member that makes the motion, followed by the board member who provides the second or seconds the motion. And then it would rotate the remaining board board members, and then end with the board president. Board improvement, let's see. Policy discussion topics, we really didn't discuss the policies in detail because prior to the meeting, we get the policy revisions. And we implemented earlier based on the board's approval of if they are minor changes, footnote references, legal references, that the administration would, you know, send it to us. And there really weren't any significant changes, so we all had read them earlier and, you know, decided to focus our time on other items that we wanted to discuss because it was, for us, a no-brainer that we wanted to... because it was, for us, a no-brainer that we wanted to adhere to the IASV recommendations on the minor changes to the policies that actually are in first reading in this meeting agenda. So that's what I have.
Thank you. Any discussions, Mr. McDonough?
It's a personal pet peeve. Could we not call it meet and greet? Could we call it meet and listen? Meet and discuss, something like that? I think it's a real good improvement, and I think we're keeping some of our promises in inviting the public to come talking, a two-way discussion session, and for some reason, that name just grates at me, so if we could just call it meet the Board or discuss with the Board, or something like that.
I would be happy to support that semantic change. Semantics is what I'm... Serge.
I want to thank the Board Improvement Committee. I think for the three years that I've been on the Board, we've been trying to solve the problem of how do you truly engage with people that we represent? We hear from the people that we know in town, we get feedback on certain things, if our, many of us still have children in the schools, so we hear from our friends, but I think a true engagement opportunity is going to allow employees to come in, is going to allow community members who, whose kids have already graduated from the schools, and our taxpayers that are supporting the schools, those taxpayers in town who do not send their children to the public school system. I think we are, have had a desire, at least I've had a desire, to hear from all of our constituents. It's not easy to figure out how to do it with the friction of the Open Meetings Act. It's a well-intentioned act, sometimes it's a little bit cumbersome, but I, I think that this is a good first attempt. I think we'll always, in the spirit of continuous improvement, always work to improve it, but I think we are speaking out and are working very hard to try to come up with ways that we can truly engage in conversation around topics. Even after the one hour, while we were working on the technical difficulties, we were already talking about ways that we can improve upon the process, so I encourage all of us to give feedback to the Board Improvement Committee, hearing a summary of the feedback that we get from our constituents, and continuing those efforts. As much as we all put a lot of hours in, I think we make the best decisions when we are best informed about the values and what our community wants to do with their tax dollars, with our education system. So I compliment Board Improvement Committee. I know it was hard to get it on the calendar, but I want to continue those efforts.
One thing I forgot. Can we set up what our default is on holding these things? If we can get the consensus of the Board, what, how often should these things be? Should they be quarterly? Should they be monthly? Should they be, whatever it is? Before we head back to our committee and plan the next one, I think it would be helpful to have that input, or do we just want to build that input, you know, by individual communications?
Well, I think the Board Improv, in my personal opinion, if you're asking me, Board Improvement Committee maybe should discuss, you know, we've had one, so the question I'd like to pose to the Board Improvement Committee is, how do we do it better? And come back with a recommendation of timing and frequency and length, just from our observations of this one. So I would encourage the Board Improvement Committee to, to ask Board Members, seek their input, and come back with some suggestions next month, and we can discuss it and, and put a plan together for this coming school year. And Serge?
I'm sorry. Actually, in, sorry, I want to let Mrs. Edner speak, but I also want to respond directly and give you some immediate feedback. I think there were a couple of topics that had come up that were perceived as though they had been around for a number of years. And I think that it might, one idea that I'll toss to the group, is that we schedule a specific night for a content discussion, a roundtable discussion, where we're talking about whether it's a curricular topic, whether it's a science curriculum, and we narrow the scope because there's a lot of different areas, and it could be something that is kind of assigned to the committees to come up with, and the curriculum committee, you can say, one of the three things that people really want to talk about. And I think it's also something we could look at in terms of scheduling our Board Meetings and ensuring that at every Board Meeting, there is some discussion about student engagement, student activities, student learning, something related to students in every meeting that we have, just to make, those are my thoughts.
Mrs. Edner?
Yeah, I think for engagement with the community, it needs to be a variety of groups. We need to focus beyond community members, which we had tonight, I mean, that's great, but we also need to connect with other groups. Last month, I attended a Brown Band Lunch at one of our elementary schools and sat down with teachers, made lunch with them, and it was, there was no agenda, and it was a really, really good way to understand a teacher's perspective on what their day-to-day job is. You know, if we could set that up more frequently with our schools, and it's easy to do, there's no agenda, and, and listen to what our teachers have to say, that was very, very helpful for me to, to get their perspective. So we need to focus on a variety of groups. I, I also have a comment about the minutes. There's one line in the minutes about evaluation and assessment of our legal counsel. What are, what are our next steps on that? Are we continuing that to the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone? Mrs. Jordan?
I want to compliment the committee as well on the efforts to engage our legislators. I think we have to be really on top of what's happening in all those areas, whether it's state or federal. I would caution us, however, to be very careful, especially in election years, as to who we invite and when, because we don't want to politicize it. We don't want people coming because they think they have a forum. I mean, the purpose of it is to let them to, get them to know us and us to know what's on their minds, and make sure that their priority, our priorities are with them, but we need to be careful.
Just so that you know, that, that was the topic every time we have this on the commendations, because we're constantly reminding ourselves that, yeah, it's the objective, the students and education, that's what it's about.
Anyone else? And should we move on to curriculum instruction? Mrs. Edner?
We discussed the REACH program on June 6th, last Wednesday night. That was our only agenda topic, so we really had an in-depth discussion about our REACH program, which was our gifted program. It was the first time we've talked about this program for the, the entire school year in our Curriculum Instruction Committee. So the first thing that we, we reviewed was an overall review of the, or description of the REACH program, what the numbers are, how many kids are in our gifted program at each grade level from third grade through eighth grade. And I guess, Charles, we're, we're going to, we're going to be adding percentages to that, to the, to that spreadsheet, so those attachments aren't on, haven't been posted yet, the attachments from the meeting, but they, they are posted now?
They will be tomorrow morning.
They will be tomorrow morning, okay.
We, we adjusted the spreadsheet in the second.
Okay, so the attachments from the meeting will be posted tomorrow morning. So you haven't seen these numbers yet, because we needed to modify the, or add more information to them before we posted. So anyway, we have the numbers of the enrollments for the REACH program, and we agreed on several items. There are more students getting admittance to our REACH program, and they are deserving of this placement. And there is a significant difference in RIT scores. I'll explain what a RIT score is. This is a math testing that is done several times a year. RIT score is the, the score that the student achieved, and we saw there, there's a very wide, there's a big difference between what our REACH students are achieving versus regular placement students. And another, another point that we, we agreed on was, at the three middle schools, we have very similar percentages of REACH students in English and Math. So we, we were happy to see that at Bryan, Sandberg, and Churchville, very similar percentages. And we also talked about the high school, who is taking weighted courses at the high school, and those numbers have increased significantly each year. We have 662 kids taking, students taking AP tests. We have more students taking weighted courses, which is, which is really, really good. We have new students taking AP classes, as well as existing AP students taking more tests in AP classes. Our AP pass rate is, is quite high, at over 90. We talked about trying to get more students taking AP classes, and this, this pass rate may go down, which, which would be okay. We'd rather, we want to see more students taking AP classes. Any questions so far? Did you want to add anything from the meeting, Jen, Maria, or Susan?
Just one of the things that's noted in the minutes, it says that, I was looking for more English AP courses, or there were fewer English AP courses offered than in other subject areas. I think what we looked at that, we looked at the weighted courses, and the idea was, we're looking at how, how much rigor we have, how many offerings we have in different subject matter areas that we can offer at the high school level. And I noted that there are fewer offerings that are considered, you know, either honors classes or AP classes in the English department. And I think it was kind of a little bit of a challenge to, to our curriculum team in terms of what types of offerings we might be able to offer in the English Language Arts curricular area at the high school. Is it appropriate that we have four offerings, but in math, we have, I think, taken a ballpark, 18 different offerings in terms of advancement in mathematics? And it isn't so much that, you know, how many courses we offer, it's more of the approach of, how many opportunities do we have to offer students to take the critical communication, writing skills, language skills, and when we think about what employers are looking for in their employees, which is basically what we are trying to do, is there are children for, for their education and for the work life, is they need to have very strong communication skills. And so it wasn't appropriate to be had that narrow band of challenging offerings. That was really...
Mr. McDonough?
Can I go back to that REACH thing? You cited that the REACH rate in all three middle schools was equivalent, and that's good. You think that's indicative of, just kind of walk me through that. I, I kind of got an intuitive sense, but I'd like to hear the actual...
Okay, this is students placing into sixth-grade courses for, for REACH in English and Math. What it tells us, and Charles, you can add your thoughts too, is that when I look at this, we have consistency among our middle schools for, for reading and Math, the instruction, there's a lot of consistency. And Charles, do you, can you want to add more to the, about the percentages?
I can recite them verbatim, but I, I think it's a good sign for a district when you see consistency across the schools. I know that there's an existing concern about some, some differences throughout the district, and I think this shows that, that some of that concern is maybe misguided, it doesn't play a lot of importance.
It's that the valuation is, is consistent, that the, the program prior to REACH, sixth-grade REACH, is consistent, is, I mean, these are what's indicated by this consistency in qualification. Is that right?
Well, certainly, I want to say that's what it is, that quality instruction, quality curriculum, and, and I think that it's showing the unification of the district doesn't come together on some kind of basis.
Great. And Serge?
On the topic, Mr. McDonough, I think there's been a perception that the REACH program just pulls percentage of students, and if you were to make assumptions about the raw academic power or strength of the students in our all-three middle schools, there were individ, there were perceptions about what each middle school student body was capable of. And so there's this perception that at a smaller school that might not have supposedly as strong a student body, the facts don't bear it out. If you look at what our students' accomplishments are, look at the data for all three middle schools. Regardless of the size of the middle school, we are seeing that we have a good number of students and approximately similar percentages in all three attendance areas for students prepared for, you know, higher-level work. And, and I think there's a perception that's been out there, that one school might be stronger than another, that you should live in this area because this is the best middle school. And the facts, which I think I'm very happy to see, we have data to back this up, those perceptions are not true. And I think that's one of the strengths that we have in the unit district.
Thanks, I appreciate you breaking that down, because I think there's some important things that we could say.
Thank you. If, if I can add just two quick points, just adding on to what Miss Hirsch had to say a minute ago about, first of all, there, the five, we offer five levels of Math every year, every academic year at York. I've heard consistently through the, by the community and by our students, that we, honors weigh two of those five, and that in terms of honors credit incentive, there is very little incentive, except for the kid that is internally motivated to absolutely challenge themselves to the extreme, to take that highest level of Math, that most challenging level of Math. Many kids have asked, and parents have asked, why don't we have two different levels of honors credit for the two levels of Math that are, that are given honors credit? So why don't we have super honors, or whatever you want to call it, for, for that highest level, for that enriched level? And then the second point is that in our English curriculum, we have two levels, and people have a very hard time reconciling the fact that we can have five levels of Math, but only two levels of English. And that when junior and senior year, your two levels are now either regular or AP, and there's nothing in between. And I've heard that consistently from the community and from students, that they would like different, they would like more levels of complexity and challenge in our English curriculum than we currently have. That's all I wanted to add.
I'll continue the, the, I have a...
Please.
Three more topics. I, I too, like Karen, I want to add a little more detail this time, based on feedback from our first meet the Board. The next topic for the REACH program was a proposed mathematics course sequence for our incoming sixth graders. This is, this is a big change, as far as I'm concerned. Incoming sixth graders in REACH will start with pre-algebra and algebra in sixth grade, move on to algebra and statistics in seventh grade, and then do enriched geometry in eighth grade. Right now, our highest level of Math in middle school is algebra, so this is going to bump us up to another level of taking geometry in the middle school. So that, that was a very positive, positive move, the, the committee agreed on that. We also are going to do some updates on science technology at the middle school. That's one of the topics we heard tonight from community members. We need to improve middle school science, so this is one way to do that, to pilot what are called NOPRO devices, which will provide a stronger lab experience for middle school kids, get them ready for high school, for rigor of our high school science courses. So that will be piloted, and it is not a large investment, right? Compared to your building STEM labs, so this is a small step in the right direction. Okay, next topic was that there is an aptitude test called the OLSAT, and that was in our district two years ago, and last year was the first year that we didn't administer the OLSAT test. We, we do math testing, which is achievement tests, and that OLSAT is a different category of test, it's aptitude, and the committee felt like some students are not being identified for the REACH program, they may not do well enough on achievement tests, but have gifted aptitude. So this is going back to Charles Jones, he's going to review this with our principals and determine the next, the best course of action, if we, how we would administer this test to select students. It wouldn't be a test for all students, but students that teachers feel that may be missing the mark on the Math test, but have gifted abilities. The next topic is something that I want the Board to come to consensus on. The next topic is something that I want the board to come to consensus on. We talked about the philosophy of our reach program. To give a little background, some districts have a reach or gifted program that pulls out top one or two percent of kids and places them into a magnet school or a different location, and then also challenges academically talented kids in their homeschool buildings. So we don't have a, we do not do something like that, it is expensive to do. And what we have are, we have all of our gifted kids and what we call academically talented together. So we have the top one percent with kids that are a little bit lower on the percentages for math testing, so we put them together with reach teachers in the elementary schools. And we are trying to get our teachers to learn more about differentiation, so they can, within the gifted program, help kids that are grade levels beyond where their peers are, but also kids that are academically talented for their grade level. So it's a wide variety of levels, and we have these kids together and hope to help our teachers provide professional development, so they can differentiate and provide instruction to this wide variety of talent levels. So this is really something that Kevin, Liachi, and Charles, they've asked the board for a philosophy for our reach program, and they need this direction to move forward and communicate to the community of what our reach program is. So any comments about philosophy of the reach program? And also just, we really need consensus now, Mrs. Drew, they've been looking for this for several months, for the year, the past year, so I'd like to just have a discussion about it. Any?
I'm just going to throw this out there. You know, the whole magnet school, the whole, you know, what level are you, is either one percent, you really are truly gifted, that sort of thing. I would support it. The only piece that I'm concerned about is if we don't have a quote-unquote business case, we don't, and you say it's expensive, you know, I can't really give you any comments without seeing a full, you know, a whole picture of what we intend and-
Well, our recommendation was to continue on the path that we're on now, and provide differentiation skills for our reach teachers. And reach teachers are also then, would possibly become the teacher leaders in their buildings, to help other teachers differentiate among children in the classroom. So our recommendation coming out of the committee was move forward as we are currently moving forward.
I think that, and Charles, I'm going to ask you to chime in here, and I just kind of state the case in terms of what feedback specifically you need from the board. I think, Mrs. Drew, I don't, there was never a proposal to say, let's carve out the gifted, if you go back to the reach report, which was written in the previous administration, it was an excellent report, it talks about Ralph's, I mean, there's five levels of giftedness, and if you really got into it, there is, a student who has autism could be truly a gifted child. I mean, there's many different ways. And I think, again, I'm going to go from my experience, there's some ambiguity and a lot of interpretation and personal perception on what the reach program is. Is it a gifted program? Is it a talented program? We had a discussion at the end of the meeting. My contention is that mathematics arm of reach is really acceleration. Now we're talking about doing geometry when the kids are in eighth grade versus enrichment. And there's kind of two different ways to do it. But neither of those are really addressing the truly gifted child. That's a very different type of approach. I don't think that anybody was in a position, I don't think the district was in a position financially, there was really no proposal to say, let's create a gifted program. It's more of, let's get some definition around the program and what our goals are for the program. Charles, will you clarify what you're looking for from us?
We were hoping to provide clarification, as you mentioned, there is some misunderstandings in the community, we hope to air those out. And confirmation of the plan that had been put in place a couple of years ago, that we've been working behind, is that, yes, this is the program that's been endorsed from the past and that we want to continue.
So it's going to be confirmation of the report that we had in hand, that, that direction?
Yeah, that really lengthy study that was done by the ROE and staff from the district two years ago.
I have a recommendation of, I don't know the timeframe, but can we see, you know, the, I mean, I'm sorry, I didn't look at the, I didn't attend the meeting, whatever, if I could get that and, you know.
You know, I'm not sure the board members knew this discussion was coming.
Okay, okay.
So I'm looking around the table, I don't see, that's not clear to the board members to spring that out and have a discussion on this. I would suggest we put it on a future agenda, get the information out to the board so you can review everything, and then come back and put it on a board, a agenda as a discussion. I don't think you want to have it tonight, though.
Yeah, maybe I shouldn't have said consensus, I really just wanted to have a discussion. So I shouldn't have used that word, but yeah, I agree with what you're saying, definitely.
Can we get that reach report to be copied of all the board members?
It's on the, I know, John, I think one of the January committee meetings, the report in its entirety is in the board docs.
I would also ask that, we have these discussions, I think in a perfect board, we'd love to offer everything to everybody, and, you know, I think we want to push every kid at every level. But to have a discussion around philosophy, we also have to have a discussion around where we allocate funds. And, you know, I think that everybody's for a gifted program, and, you know, who wouldn't be? But I think the reality of where we spend our money and where we allocate our funds, because we do have, you know, a hundred percent of the kids in the schools that we have to serve. So, and I think we have to have this debate as the backdrop of how much of our resources are we allocating in this program. You know, already, I, obviously, we'd love to see as much as possible, but by the same token, there's, you know, eighty percent of the student population that needs to be served as well, we need to make sure that they're being challenged for it.
Anyone else?
Anything else for recruitment instruction? Then let's move on to finance and operations, because I think we have a discussion here as well.
All right, on May 30th, we had a facility user group meeting for our facility users. And the main topic of discussion was the, was the new fee schedule, moving to a new fee schedule. You know, it's no secret that we have budget pressures in the district. I think that as Dave and Chris have gone through in the administration and updating and assembling the budget, you know, I think things have tended to not break favorably for us, and it's caused, you know, some concern on that side as well, which has elevated the importance of making sure that we cover our costs through this program, and the need to implement this fee structure as soon as possible. But at the same time, adhering to our commitment to customer engagement, is most of the folks that are going to be impacted by these fee increases are ultimately taxpayers in our district, and many have children in our schools too. So there's hundreds of families that are going to be impacted by this decision as well. So, you know, I think it's balancing that need for speed with, you know, with our commitment to engagement. So we did invite, invite the users in. We had a draft user agreement in place. We focused on the fee section mainly, the primary side of this was move to an hourly based fee structure, and then also your charges, separate charges for supervision, custodial, and then a separate set of charges for, it was a menu approach. And I think what we heard back from the community were that there were questions around the impact on their organization, particularly around how we were going to implement it vis-à-vis supervision, custodial, you know, some of the other charges beyond just the hourly piece. And I think that we engaged in a discussion with them and hopefully continue to discuss with them about ways that we may save costs. One of the items that we had discussed was, on the supervision side, the potential to contract for outside security at much lower cost than we're currently paying for, you know, like a stubble side for supervision is a way to save costs and bring down the fees. You know, one of the other topics that came up was a need to potentially examine our staffing model to reuse overtime, and there are opportunities to, you know, to manage shifts in such a way that we start to lower the overtime, because that can be significant cost to us. And I think coming out of that, you know, with the schedule that we're on now for this implementation, you know, I think that Chris and I have spoken briefly about coming up with some options to, you know, beyond the ones currently on the table, to potentially simplify the fee structure, integrate fewer menu items, so that it reduces the administrative cost. I think, you know, the current, in the current list, it's a dollar per chair, but I can't imagine how much it's going to cost us to track that dollar per chair and actually bill for collective, and make sure that we actually set it up and took it down. So maybe there's an opportunity to simplify this maybe a little bit. And also to lessen the variability. So I think our objective is, is that our customers, when they come use a facility, when they open the bill after they're done, and they're not blown away by something that's in order of magnitude higher than what they thought. So, you know, I think those discussions are ongoing. We've committed to the community too, that, you know, nothing's ever perfect the first time you roll this out. And, you know, we are going to have follow-up meetings with these user groups as we implement to work through, but we, you know, we reinforce the fact that we need to, we need to move this into place as soon as possible. From a timing perspective, the original reservation, open reservation was going to be in July 1st. Given the timetable, we're not going to be able to have a fee structure in place by then, so we postponed the open reservation system. The schedule now is, you know, Chris and Dave had some thoughts that they want to share with the finance committee on the 21st, where we will then finalize a recommendation to the board that we will bring back to the board on the 17th of July, and then open up the reservation system as soon as possible after that, depending on when we're graduated. So that's the, that's the update on that, and I have opened it up for comments on, and discussion on whether that timetable makes sense.
Mrs. Drew.
So just a point of clarification, Chris, we want to start implementing this or phasing in the approach, and that's what we're saying that comes to us in July, July 17? Is that, am I clear or unclear?
Yeah, I think we've got another point, we're giving the budget strange, we don't really have a choice but to put this in place quickly. And, but, you know, we're committed, these folks are our customers. And, and so, you know, I think in talking with Chris, we were able to get this in place in a reasonable timeframe, such that it could start being implemented in the new school year. And it will require us to push back the reservation system opening by three, four weeks, and we'll work with folks to make sure that that works.
Yeah, we have more of those users, we could put it over here if we need. If we don't need it, that's, that's your work, it's the terror of it again next summer. Ms. Hirsch.
Clearly, the finance committee has spent a lot of time on this topic. I would encourage us just to come to conclusion as soon as we can, because in 17, it's obviously the next quarter, we're not ready to go on tonight. But I want to remind us that, yes, these people are our customers, and they're our taxpayers, and they're community members. However, we have eight thousand students that are responsible for every dollar that comes in to our district from the taxpayer. Our obligation is to ensure that those dollars are going directly to educating our eight thousand students. So while we want to be accommodated to these organizations, we want to offer our facilities if they're not in use, we do need to make sure we're covering our costs, and I think that this is something that I have absolutely no problem supporting. We need to cover our costs, we need to do it as quickly as possible, and get on with business of educating our kids and focusing on the larger picture of our financial situation.
Any other topics for finance and operations? There are none? Then let's go to the superintendent's agenda, the consent agenda. Would anyone, Ms. Hirsch?
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda, including items A through J.
Point of order, if you were asked if there are things that need to be removed first, that way we won't have a motion that not everybody can support.
Draw the motion, person.
I would draw the motion.
Anyone like to remove any items? Thank you, Mrs. Drew. Mrs. Drew?
Funny you should ask, item E.
Item E, okay. Any other items? All right, Ms. Hirsch, your turn.
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda, items A through J minus item E.
I hear a second to that motion.
Second.
Second, moved by Mrs. Hirsch, seconded by Mrs. Edner. Any discussion? That's a good one. Any, does this need to be a voice vote? We, okay. Mrs. Walsh.
Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mrs. Edner?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Mrs. Droning?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. Motion carries, seven ayes, no nays. Now, discussion of our, do I hear a motion for item E?
I move that the Board of Education approve the reclassification from unassigned fund balance to committed fund balance in the amount of $2,924,497 as of June 12, 2012.
Would anyone want to second that?
I'll second.
Thank you. Moved by Mrs. Hirsch, seconded by Mrs. Edner. Discussion. Mrs. Drew.
Mr. Walton, I had emailed you asking you whether or not this was going to put us in a bad position in terms of our cash flow in May, if we move $3 million of money from our fund balance, if it's committed. And you sent me a very eloquent reply, which I'm sure any business manager could understand, but I didn't. Can you say in layman's terms why, can you help me understand why that isn't going to happen if we don't, we can't use those funds? To me, the word committed fund says we can't use those funds, and yet we need every bit of $3 million when we get low in May, in the first of June, before our taxes come in. So that, I guess, is what I was trying to ask you in the email. And I'm sure you answered it, but I need, I need pared-down language.
Well, the situation with this tax refund, it is a potential, a potential refund that we will have to return to the county. It could happen soon, it could go on for a while. Our balance at May 30th first is, has improved this year over last year at the same, same point. So I'm more concerned about balancing the budget for 1213, and if we do balance the budget for next school year, then we should be in a, at a similar spot in May, and not at risk of having to do tax anticipation warrants. Tax anticipation warrants is a cash flow issue. This is an accounting issue for the 2012 audit report.
So committed versus non-committed funds don't affect our cash flow in any way? We can use that $3 million to pay the bills, even though we are somehow calling it on a balance sheet or in an audit, committed?
It is committed, and as it should be, because we might have to pay this at some point. We need to set this money aside, because we might have to return it to the county. You know, could it, could it impact our tax anticipation warrants? It might, but, but, you know, I don't think, I think this is a conservative approach to a potential tax refund.
Excuse me, question, real quick, excuse me, question, is there going to be a separate bank account that this cash sits in? Or is this, this is an accounting entry that goes into the audit of financial statements, but it's not like this money gets pulled out of the checking account and put somewhere-
somewhere else? Secondly, about 2.1 million of this is money we haven't received yet. So, right, the 2011 payments are going to come, well, they just came, just came. So they don't affect the May 31st balance. So we really need about $800,000 out of the kind of old projection, right, to carve out of this. So it wasn't like you were taking the low point of the fund balancing, the original projection and subtracting $3 million from it at May 31st. Right, this is a June 30 accounting entry.
It is.
Right. So it's not, if you were previously looking at low point in the fund balance of $3 million and saying, well, this will wipe that out, that's, that's, 2.1 million of that is after May 31st. So at June 30, the fund balance will be significantly above $3 million because we've gotten all our first installment of tax debt.
I'm more concerned about next May, not this May. I know we're in good shape this May. I'm concerned about what our cash flow is going to look like May of 2013 and whether or not...
And we had budgeted most of this, what was, we did not count on the revenue from the hospital in our budget when we were looking to balance the budget. So it's not like that creates a hole that we didn't already have. The only portion of it was current and remarcation is like that 500,000 in there or what? We had budgeted without the hospital. So most of this was already figured into the budget for this coming year.
Right. What happened was, the hospital is new growth. So that is additional tax extension beyond the CPI was the 39 million of the hospital. So we did not project for that, that additional tax extension in our revenues for next year. So we are, so we receive more money, or we will be receiving from the hospital, more money than we projected. And now that money will be reserved or committed.
But it was never budgeted to begin with. So we're taking most of that funding and that's in excess right now, we can call it excess, and committing it for the potential of having to pay it back. And we had talked about this as a concept a few meetings ago. The only difference now is, there's a piece of this that is in addition, that we may have to pay in addition to what we're getting back because of past. And that's about, Chris, do you remember? About $800,000. So that is the piece that we're committing to that we're going to have to budget for next year if we have to pay that back. But I don't think right now we're worried about the fund equity with the $800,000. 2.2 million is money we're going to have that we're just going to set aside and commit to. And that's money we never budgeted to begin with.
So if I could summarize, would it be safe to say that what you're going to, you're going to receive this year an additional two, or is it two and a half million from the hospital? That is new money coming to the door. $2.1 million. So we're going to set that $2.1 million aside because we may have to give it back. In addition, the hospital's applied for tax repays from three prior years. Now, that's money we've already spent. So that totals about $800,000. So that's 800, so by committing it, in other words, setting it aside, that's just in our budgeting process for this next school year, that's just $800,000 less that we're going to spend, that we're going to budget to spend. So if, in fact, we have to refund it during the 2012, 2013 school year, it is set aside and we would not be in a situation where we have to issue tax anticipation warrants. If we didn't set it aside and we budgeted to spend it and we had to refund it during this next school year, we may be in a situation where we would have to issue tax anticipation warrants. So this is the conservative thing to do. Does that make it any more clear or do I just confuse the issue more?
No, that's clearer. Do we have to do this now? Can we wait and see if we can balance the budget? We've got all kinds of things that are coming in now that make it look like balancing the budget is going to be very difficult. Is this required to be done right now? Or would it be more prudent to wait until we see whether or not we actually can balance our budget and won't need these funds in May of 2013?
It would be more conservative to balance our budget because we haven't passed the 2012, 2013 budget yet. It would be more prudent and more conservative on our part to balance that budget and pass that budget without the $800,000 in it. So by setting it aside, yeah, so by setting it aside now, we're doing the more prudent and more conservative thing.
The danger is, if we don't, if we don't set it aside and we end up budgeting $800,000 in the 12-13 school year, then we really would have potentially a real budget problem halfway through next year, some other time. You don't want to do that. So it forces us to say, you know what? We're going to take the $800,000 out of our budget right now, make sure that if we get caught, if we have to pay it back, we have it back. And then we'll deal with, and we'll have to develop a budget with that shortfall in mind. And that's the downside of this is that this issue has forced us to, again, have a potential reduction in our budget because we have this commitment of $800,000 that potentially we have to pay back to the hospital.
Mrs. Hirsch?
Mrs. Droni, I agree with you. If it were something that we had a reasonable expectation in terms of a timeframe of a decision from the state on this whole issue related to the hospitals, I would feel more comfortable. If it was a decision that was going to command, it would be expected in another month, I would be more willing to, you know, wait and delay the decision. However, given the nature of the discussions that are going on at the level of state, I feel as though we can't afford to count on any one of those dollars. They could go either way. And I personally would prefer to just say, take the money, set it aside, and work with the resources that we know we can count on.
Mrs. Droni?
The bill that passed in the spring session operated prospectively. Did it cover 2012 taxes or 2013 taxes? And did it in any way resolve past years, 2011, 2010, and '09, 2009? And will those be decided under the old law, which the Supreme Court already sent a pretty strong message about what's a charitable exemption is not?
By conversation with our attorney about this issue that the old law would apply to 2009, 10, and 11, and the new law will apply to next year.
To 2012, collected in 2013.
Mrs. Droni?
Don't misunderstand me. I'm not suggesting that we budget the $800,000 and spend it. I'm just questioning what the accounting entry does to our ability to pay our bills next May if, in fact, we have earmarked these funds as untouchable. That's all. And I'm hearing in a roundabout way that maybe those two things are separate and that it's not a concern. Obviously, it's not. It's on the consent agenda. But I just didn't understand it. I can continue this discussion later if everyone else is comfortable with this.
Assuming that we balance the budget, I don't anticipate a need to issue tax anticipation warrants next May.
Let's say, just to extend Mrs. Droni's point as far as we possibly can go with it, that something happens and, in fact, next May, we find ourselves in a deficit situation. Can we, can we uncommit? And it's clear by next May, we're not refunding it to the county government to give back to the hospital in that fiscal year. That if anything's happening, it's going to be in the following fiscal year. Can we uncommit those funds to pay our bills instead of, instead of issuing tax anticipation warrants? It is cash in the bank that we have. And if it's clear we don't have to pay it back in next school year or next fiscal year that begins July 1st, could we uncommit it?
I think your question is, does the cash just have to be there on June 30th? So, I mean, if you needed it May 31st, could you use it as long as it was back there by June 30th? It's a liquidity question.
Right, exactly.
That would be a legal question. The auditor had recommended that we approve this for the audit. But if you want to postpone it for that question, I, he wanted it done in fiscal year 2012. He wanted this approved in June for the audit.
Got it. You're going to get a nasty note anyway, regardless of whether you put this, it's going to end up in the financial statements. There's a significant risk that we're going to owe the hospital this much money. So regardless of where it shows up on the balance sheet, it's going to end up in a footnote with a big disclaimer to it. You're basically taking a conservative approach to ensure our financials are more forthright than whatever.
Well, how would the Board like to proceed? Is to approve it so that we can get it in the audit or to explore the what-if question? Okay. So it sounds like we should proceed with the motion in the Board then. I believe we would need a voice vote to recommit funds?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Walsh?
Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mrs. Edner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Droni?
No.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. Motion carries, six ayes, one nay. Next is the Superintendent's Agenda Action Items. Mr. Pernod?
Yes, the first item is the resolution that was talked about at the open hearing for the public, and that is the resolution exceeding 5%. And I would recommend that the Board approve that resolution as presented.
Do I hear a motion? Mrs. Droni?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution to waive the limitation on administrative costs.
Second, moved by Mrs. Droni, seconded by Mrs. Hirsch. Do I need a voice vote? Okay. We just need a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second item, approval of resolution to waive, I'm sorry.
No, and I apologize if it took you so long.
Yeah, Mr. Pernod?
Yeah. And the second item, which is actually, is approval of the resolution for the bank depositories. And this is, we're required to do this on an annual basis. And you have a full new recommendation for bank depositories this season.
Do I hear a motion? Mrs. Hirsch?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution which approves the banks, savings and loans and investment pools which the district may use as bank depositories for the 2012, 2013 school year.
Second?
Moved by Mrs. Hirsch, seconded by Mrs. Droni. Any discussion? Mr. Bloom?
I'll throw out a question that you asked earlier. Do we have any idea how many of these folks bought our bonds in the bank qualified market?
No.
All right, maybe it's more rhetorical, but I would strongly suggest this issue comes up next year if we issue bonds that those folks are, maybe we're back at issuing bonds.
We plan to do that.
Thank you.
I will, I will add one comment, that I work for a bank, but none of these funds are being deposited in the bank that I work for. I just want to make that very clear.
All right, any further discussion? All right. I believe I need a voice vote for this as well, right?
No.
No?
Not spending money.
No, no, I need a voice vote to oppose a rule called, I'm sorry, my unclear terminology. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. And then review our upcoming meetings. And there are a lot of them. Tuesday, June 19th, Special Board of Education meeting at 5:15 p.m., and that is our Board Self-Evaluation meeting. No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, that is our Board Retreat again. Thank you for the help with the terminology. Tuesday, June 21st, the Finance and Operations Committee meeting at 6:30 p.m. Tuesday, June 26th, Board of Education Special Meeting, and that is our Board Self-Evaluation meeting. Thursday, June 28th, Board Improvement and Policy Committee meeting. Tuesday, July 10th, Board of Education Special Meeting for our retreat. Thank you. I need to keep all three of those straight. And then Tuesday, July 17th, is our regular Board of Education meeting. Sure, please.
I just wanted to explain what this flurry of meetings are. The first meeting that's coming up is next Tuesday. We've come tonight. And that is going to be the first part of our Board Retreat. We've been talking about the Board Retreat for a while now. We have a lot of goals for this Board Retreat. But the first step is, Mr. Pernod would like to have his executive team lead, and this is a public, open meeting. Everyone is welcome. It starts at 5:15. And the plan is for our crack team up there to take us through, and on this side as well, a summary, a recap of the year, what challenges, what accomplishments we've had in the last year by department, as well as anticipation of what their goals are and projects are in terms of their work planned for the next, for the upcoming school year. So it's, I think that the target originally, Mr. Pernod, was a half an hour per content area, so curriculum instruction, summary of where we were for the last year and what we're looking forward to. And that's all seven Board members. Mr. Pernod, the Cabinet is going to be there. It is an open meeting, and you're more than welcome to join us for that meeting. The 26th, Mrs. Stupin, do you want to give a recap of what that meeting is?
Yeah, recap from my, the Board Improvement meeting that we had last month. And that really is a self-evaluation, a Board Self-Evaluation that's going on.
That's a closed meeting?
It's a closed, I'm sorry. That is a closed session. IASB, which is the Illinois Association School Board, Regional Director, who facilitates these Board Self-Evaluations, will be facilitating that closed session with the Board and the Superintendent.
And then the second part of the Board Retreat is scheduled for July 10th. That, again, starts at 5:15. That meeting, we're actually going to be finally talking about the district performance indicators. Again, full Board, full Cabinet, and we'll be going through the district performance indicators and hopefully identifying some key indicators for the Board to focus on. But it's really a good in-depth discussion of the work that we've been doing, trying to build to get to this point. So those are those special meetings. I wanted to explain those a little bit further.
Then we have one more item. Our action out of closed session regarding employment of employee. Thank you, Mrs. Hirsch, for volunteering to make that motion.
Thank you for passing the motion. I move that the Board of Education approve a 0.75% salary increase for the non-union, non-administrative salaries as recommended by the administration.
Do I hear a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Moved by Mrs. Hirsch, seconded by Mrs. Stupin. Any discussion?
Actually, I'm going to ask Mr. Pernod if you could give us, just at first, a definition of what employees this motion covers.
This will cover Central Office Support employees that are, again, non-union, non-administrative.
This will cover central office support employees that are, again, non-union, non-administrative, along with the food service department. So those are the two biggest categories of employees in this recommendation.
Thank you. And I just wanted to, the recommendation's coming from the administration. I think the 0.75 salary increase, we're in very difficult budget times. We're cutting the budgets. This is something that is very challenging to have to sit here and offer someone less than 1% of a salary increase. However, we do want to recognize that this staff is providing a critical service to our district. We value them, we wish it could be more, but our resources are not available. I also want to mention that as a board, I believe we've been working very hard to provide some consistency across all of our employee groups. And so this 0.75 number actually comes, it is one half of the Consumer Price Index. And that is how the administration arrived at that particular number. So this is in alignment with the types of increases. Our contracts are now tied to the Consumer Price Index in one way or another, some to more of an extent than others. But this is an attempt, I think, by the Board to be consistent in how we treat our employees and to tie our compensation to our revenue stream, which is capped by the Consumer Price Index.
Just, just so I clarify, so there's not confusion with public. It's not this year's current CPI. It is the CPI that we collected as a school district, which was two years ago. So that is half the CPI for that year. Again, the problem is, we do not collect the CPI on the increase in our property assessments until almost two years out. So we are actually basing this increase on a cash flow that we get from that property, and that's a two-year-old figure. So just so people understand, it's not based on issues, which was high.
And the other thing I'll point out is, this is also the exact same percentage that the majority of our teachers will receive in a raise against this fee. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Spending money, so we need a roll call vote. Mrs. Walsh?
Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Edner?
Yes.
Mrs. Droni?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Any further, then, motion, I'm sorry, seven ayes, no nays, motion passes. It's getting late for me, I apologize. And then move on to our next topic, which is board communications. Anyone have anything to add to the board's communication section? Mrs. Stufen?
The only thing that I wanted to add is that Len held a special Len meeting on Friday because of the General Assembly, still has issues looming, which is the budget, and pension, and so there's, there's probably going to be special sessions because they want to make, they want to pass legislation around those two issues.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none. Do I hear a motion adjourned? Second?
I second the motion.
Moved by Mrs. Hirsch, seconded by Mrs. Stufen. All in favor?
Aye.
All, any opposed? Motion carries. We adjourn.